All right, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Invite everyone to the stand and join us in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you call the votes, please?
Jim Dombek.
Here.
Jim Schadl.
Here.
Christian Papel.
Here.
Michael Vito.
Here.
Ben Curry Evans.
Here.
Alex Reyes.
Here.
Eric Jones.
Present.
A former president.
Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed?
Submit.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Post. Seconded. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Submit.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, roll call.
Charles.
Yes.
Papel.
Yes.
Vito.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yeah.
Jones.
Yes.
Dombek.
Yes.
Motion heard.
Is there a motion to approve the NIA consent agenda as presented?
Submit.
Seconded.
Jones.
Moved in seconded, roll call.
Papel.
Yes.
Vito.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Schadl.
Yes.
Dombek.
Yes.
Motion heard.
Audience to visitors. Is there anyone in the audience this evening who would like to address the board with any particular issue? Everybody's at the back of the room.
It's hard to know where to stand. Good evening.
Well, you can stand right at the center.
Well, if I do that, I don't want my back turned on anyone, but I want to do votes. I think I'm good. My name is Dot Lulis. I am a third grade teacher at South Korea Elementary School for a limited number of days anyway. I just came because I wanted to express my gratitude. I retire after 20 years of teaching in Sycamore schools. Forty years of teaching or working full-time, so it's a big accomplishment and a celebration. So I just wanted to say, especially after serving under four superintendents now in this district and four principals, a lot has changed over that 20-year period. So a lot of growing on the part of our school, our district. My family came to Sycamore 24 years ago now, so we moved in first day was June 1st of 2020, or 2000, I should say. So it's been a ride. Sycamore's a great place to live, bring up kids and grow. My oldest son at the time was just starting high school, youngest was second year here at the middle school, and just felt right at home. So from the depths of my heart, thank you, thank you, thank you.
From all of us to you, thank you very much for everything you've done.
Collegement, I was actually at the board meeting, the town hall meeting, last Tuesday, and I made a statement about the Wisconsin class size being 18 to 1, and that was incorrect. I just wanted to reiterate that. It's only 18 to 1 if it's the achievement gap schools. It's not all the schools. It's only single schools. Can I explain that clearly?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board this evening? Okay, we'll move on then. Communications, letters, newsletters. Any comments there? FOIA requests? Looks like there's no requests. Suspension report? It's springtime. Committee reports?
Sure. I've got one. The Finance Committee met on April 3rd, and because I like to print things out and kill trees, I made a report for you guys because there's a lot of numbers, and sometimes it's easier to read than to verbally communicate. But overall, everything seemed like it's trending normal compared to how the district usually is. Some of our final numbers for both revenues and expenditures aren't fully determined yet. Nicole has to do some more calculations and wait on some more data to roll in. But that's about all there. The main thing that we discussed that required board action that I thought was the personnel recommendation. What happens is the district solicits feedback from various administrators throughout the district. They come up with a number of staff. I think it was 5.6, and then the upper administration sort of whittles that down to a more sizable and affordable approach, and they believe that that is 2.6 FTE, which is full-time equivalency for staffing for, it'll be academic year 2025, because we're in '24 now. That's about all. Do you have anything to add, Eric?
No, I mean, operating expenses stay or looking to stay pretty consistent for next year. We've got some extra revenue coming into the transportation budget due to not having to have as many outplaced students that were in the now service of the district, so that's going to be great for both the students and the budget. Mark obviously has a lot of projects around the schools that we've talked about for years now, and obviously not even the slightest portion of that is really covered in this proposed budget. So one thing that Alex and I suggested, and would like to probably have a future agenda item on with the board, would be looking at possibly tackling a few of those projects, recognizing that that may push us past a balanced budget and maybe into slight deficit spending, but the cost of those projects is only going to continue to grow if we continue to postpone them. So something that we thought the board might be open to trying to tackle a few more of those in the coming year than what was proposed here. Recognizing also that the budget that we put together is typically very conservative and has some overages in there that we can probably eat into for some of these projects and still come out pretty close. Other than that, I think the recommendation was to hire an additional social worker, have a 46 speech language pathologist, and then looking to add to the IT department. Obviously, that's a big infrastructure need from the other side. It's not so much, you know, the bricks and walls, but it is the network that runs a lot of our day-to-day operations. We've had a lot of attrition in that department over at least in the 10, 11 years, but I've been on the board as some of the, you know, tech assistants and whatnot have retired that we've never replaced, so looking to add a person there to help edit this staff with everything that needs to be done there.
I think it's a good recommendation for a future agenda item to take a look at projects that absolutely have to be done. I mean, I know there's a long list, but at some point, we still have to prioritize from that list. So it would be good to have a presentation if we could.
We kind of go ahead and it's kind of like the social worker piece. So one of the things we've seen, not just in Sycamore, but across the board in education, is student behaviors that are a little out of the norm. A little more challenging than student behavior that we've seen in the past. And one of the things we've traditionally done with to help support students and staff is to add social work support. It's one of the things that we talked about, some of the things that Eric mentioned, but before we move forward with that, we're just going to also kind of take a step back and make up what we're not able to do a little differently. The request has been social work, but could we look at something different? You know, a behavior coach or supporter, something that could provide some direct support to students, but also direct support to teachers, to staff who are saying some things that we haven't seen before. So trying to be creative with that position, just trying to find the best way to support our students and staff. But essentially, that was the aspect. I just want to let the board know that we're kind of looking at that position a little bit more creatively than we've done in the past.
Any other questions or comments about that? Well, thank you for the report and for representing us at that particular meeting. It always just kind of floors me how we're able to keep operational expenses down as low as we do. And I think we're really toeing the line in that area. It's just that there's a finite number of dollars that go into the system, and we have to, we just have to deal with those. You had a report?
Yes, I went to the North Grove School Association meeting. It's a very, good group of people who are very, a couple of community, and they support the schoolhouse. I don't know if you've been there. I encourage you to go. If you have not, I can set up a tour. Just contact me. You'd be a great way. My oldest son and I went to help clean it up and to get it ready for the season for tours, so that the students would come in and see how classes were back in the past. It's a very good resource for learning about our community and how things were back then. I thought it was very educational.
Do they still have the opportunity to add to some of the land around the school?
I know it's the firm that's next to that. They've been kind of stewarding it. I think that's still on the table, but I'd have to go back to the board and discuss that. That was not on the agenda at the time.
I just wondered if they were still fundraising for that purpose?
There's a lot of projects in the school to maintain it and to keep it how it was authentic.
Yes.
Two members of the board were actually students at the schoolhouse, so it's kind of nice having them go through and be like, well, it's not like that. They were able to set us straight pretty quick.
Yeah. That was good. Thank you.
SEF met on the 15th. It was a grant night. There were four grants presented, all four approved. So yeah, some interesting ideas, some pretty understandable ideas as well. So, but yeah, just a... I guess the other thing, I guess, mentioned at the meeting was that I always bring up Tate Group. It's one of their biggest fundraisers. It's not until September till planning has already begun. So just another thing to discuss there.
Are there committee reports?
We did have our final Citizens Advisory Committee meeting, and we were able to bring forth the idea about the countywide tax that could possibly be implemented, and the importance of the need to do renovations on the Sycamore High School. And I really appreciated being a part of that committee. I enjoy hearing what the community has to say, and they weren't totally against the idea. There were some concerns expressed about because of the state of the economy and everything, but it is something we do need to consider in the future, how we're going to get these repairs done on the high school, because a high school is really important to the district. And so we got a lot of good input from people. They didn't totally support the idea of the tax, of course, but we're kind of stuck in a position where we have to make up some kind of policy or bring forth something where we can get it done. So again, I enjoyed being a part of it. I really appreciated everyone, all of the community people that did come and spend the time with us to discuss those things.
How many people were on there?
Well, at one time, it seemed like there was at least 10 people. Now, in the last meeting, there wasn't that many, so a few did not show up. Steve would know that more than I would, how many are actually here.
There are 10 official community members, and then there's a board member and myself to participate. It's hard to get all 12 people at the same time, you know, in a night. And what I've done is divide that into like groups of six who served for two years, and then they kind of rotate. So at the last meeting, there were six members that had been on the committee for two years, so we thanked them for their service, and next fall, we'll be looking for six more volunteers. So we, I generally with communications to get a survey out, get a list of interested parents. And then I try to get a good cross-section of parents from across the district that represent five different elementary schools, but then also make sure that we have representation from both school and high school too. So 12 officially. I would say at any given meeting, we've got somewhere between eight and 10, depending on the night.
Did the people that expressed concern about the tax were part of the committee, or were they people that showed up to that meeting to express concern?
It was people who are part of the committee, yeah.
Okay.
And then they had really good feedback, some pros and cons. I thought they gave us really good feedback.
It wasn't terribly negative. They brought up some good points, though, and I thought the best point is this is how it will be received because of the state of the economy.
Other committee reports?
Sports boosters had a meeting in February. They didn't have a form in March. And April minutes aren't yet available or approved, but the February meeting had a fair amount of recognition, a lot of good things happening. The minutes are posted publicly, so you can see some of the recognition there. Most notably, though, there was discussion about financial safeguards in place. And so the consensus was that they have excellent safeguards in place currently, and that they are going to implement an internal quarterly audit in addition to their outside annual audit. So that was it.
That's going to be an outside audit, I think.
Yes, they currently conduct an outside audit. I have an outside audit conducted already, but the quarterly internal audits are now going to be from the executive board in addition, because that way you don't have to wait for the annual audit.
Yep. I think that's a good idea. Are there committee reports? We'll move along then to Assistant Supervising for Business.
I'm going to do my best to cut her for Nicole. Nicole couldn't be here tonight. She had a personal matter to attend to. But this is pretty straightforward. So back in March, Nicole presented recommendations for student fees on first reading. There have not been any changes to the fees, the student fees that she's presented. Unless there are any questions, on behalf of Nicole, I would ask the board to consider approving the fees as presented.
The big motion to approve the fees for FY '25 is presented.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Roll call?
Did you know?
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Schadl.
Yes.
Papel.
Yes.
Dombek.
Yes.
Motion heard.
Thanks, Jim. This is one of my favorite meetings of the year, where we get to recognize our excellence in education nominees and winners. The timeline's kind of changed the last few years, not a pandemic, but we're back on the normal one, so they were just celebrated this past week at Community Foundation at the Depot. So just, Steve, you want to click for me or you want to hand?
I'm going to let you drive.
So just for those of you who maybe haven't been around this or aren't as familiar, this is something Yvonne Johnson, so our very own, got started. This is the 25th year now, which comes out to $124,000 awarded to educators for DeKalb County, recognizing them for the impact that they've had on communities. So here's a little bit just about the nomination requirements. I'm not going to go through all of this, but it really focuses not only on what they do for that district and the impact they have in the classroom, but the overall impact, the impact they have on the community as well, and what they do for the community, service to the community. The one line I really want to draw attention to is that last sentence in bold. Their most important quality should be their superior ability to inspire a love of learning in students of all backgrounds and abilities. Reading through what students write about these individuals is one of my favorite things to do every single year, and just to hear the way they talk about educators. And I know it's not just the people nominated, but all our educators and the impact they have and how important that is. So it's a really special night that we got to have last week, but then hear it as a district as well. So our first one is in the elementary category, and that is Kelsey Bolt. So let's start just, Kelsey, I think you're back there somewhere. While this is always one of my favorite times, I know these individuals because they aren't in it for this reason. It's one of their least favorite times for me to talk about them and say, you know, what others have said about them. It makes them uncomfortable, but I feel it's important that we celebrate them and hear the words of their colleagues as well as students. So I will read through these so we can all hear. Kelsey works hard for the greater good of all staff and students. She has a deep passion for helping others. She is honest, humble, and trustworthy. Kelsey is pure joy. Kelsey is consistently patient, kind, and aware of what is needed. Simply said, children love her and love being a part of her classroom environment. She makes everyone around her a better person by being a great person. And then this is kind of a transition over to students, so you can just kind of see the impact that Kelsey's had. And this is the student that wrote on behalf of Kelsey is now a senior, so has now made it all the way through, and is exceptional student and product of Southeast and Sycamore. Good teachers teach you the curriculum to the best of their ability and try to have the biggest impact in your time with them. Great teachers do that and more. They stick with you through the hardships that are yet to come. They become your biggest fan in your successes. They believe in you when no one else does. Mrs. Bolts is my great teacher. Mrs. Bolts was my teacher when I was 12 years old. And while she excelled in her job in teaching me science, the life lessons she taught me are things that have carried with me forever. Mrs. Bolts is the closest thing to a home you can get. I am forever grateful for Mrs. Bolts' role in my life. So Kelsey, I'm going to ask you to come forward, and everyone, join me again in recognizing the students. We have a board medal for you, so if you can make your way up to Mr. Dombek, please.
All right.
Right in front of you. Are you individual pictures and then probably a group at the end?
We can do a group-a-thon.
It's up to you.
All right, we'll do action shots of the individuals.
I won't make the stand.
Thank you.
Yeah. Lauren will catch you at the end, though, if you can hang around. Our next category is our high school nominee, and that's Carolyn Hoover. Carolyn, I see you there. Carolyn consistently goes above and beyond for students. She possesses a remarkable ability to get the best out of students who may not otherwise succeed. Carolyn ensures that students, especially those in the minority of our student body, have a safe place where they can feel confident and take pride in who they are. I have had students in class that view Carolyn as their trusted adult in the building, many of whom are our highest at-risk students. I think it's worth mentioning, too, for those of you that don't know, Carolyn's a speech and language pathologist for us. So there's a very small group of students that Carolyn has to meet with. Many of these comments are about students that she doesn't have to meet with, that she's just their safe person or safe place. Carolyn is a defender and advocate for struggling students and is recognized district-wide as a point person for these students. Her love for and commitment to her students is the backbone of her professional practice, and she continues to demonstrate every day that education is, and always, and should always be, a people-first profession. And then these are from students. She is always welcoming students with a big smile and asking them about their day. I can have a blast speaking with her while also getting better at my speech. Because of her, I am able to speak Rs and Ls much better in conversations. She is a kind soul who is always willing to open her ears and help her students. Carolyn, please come on up. Please come front center, Carolyn.
Take the victory, Steve.
Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have our middle school nominee, as well as the middle school winner for DeKalb County, and that's Catherine Katz, art teacher here at the middle school. Catherine is universally respected and admired by her colleagues and her students. She is a leader in shaping our school's culture. She brings pure energy to our staff. She fosters a welcoming environment for students, and she works tirelessly to ensure SMS produces an atmosphere that both staff and students look forward to coming to every day. Her personality is contagious, and her energy makes you want to be a part of the work being done. When Catherine's involved, it's not necessarily a following that she gains. It's a movement. Catherine is a champion of her students. She takes interest in meeting the emotional needs of our students and staff as well. It is not often that you encounter a teacher as extraordinary as her. Her ability to bring a smile in any room she enters with her silly attitude and good spirit... Sorry, that's from a student. But staff feel the same. Mrs. Katz is always respectful and kind to everyone, including people who didn't like art. She helps everyone feel proud of the art they created. We can all say we are proud and honored to call Mrs. Katz our teacher. Dana, is she here or no? Are you by yourself? Dana?
You're right here.
Your daughter? You just by yourself?
I'm by myself, yes.
Okay.
She's at Jim.
I was going to say, if she's here, I'll have her read something. So our final category is support staff, and our nominee and also winner for the county award was Sue Hughes from Southeast. Her unwavering kindness, dedication, professionalism, and loyalty have left an indelible mark on our school community. She is the heartbeat of Southeast. I am confident that her positive impact will continue to resonate for years to come. There is no other person as wonderful as Sue Hughes. Sue has a warm and approachable demeanor that makes everyone feel welcome when entering the school's office. Staff come to her and confide in her when they need support and advice. She always works to get our families what they need. And then these are from students. When Mrs. Hughes asked me to write her a letter, it made me feel proud that she picked me out of all the students. The reason I felt proud is because everyone at the school loves her so much. I have many reasons I think Mrs. Hughes makes our school excellent, but here are the top five. No matter what, she is always smiling. If I'm having a bad day, all I have to do is go to the office for a hug from Mrs. Hughes, and my day becomes better. I think Mrs. Hughes knows everything about Southeast School, literally everything. She puts up with my crazy mom and all the other teachers, and I just love it. I feel safe at school knowing Mrs. Hughes is there. I know if anything bad happens, she will try her hardest to keep us all safe. I look up to Mrs. Hughes. She is always in a great mood, and I can tell she really loves being at Southeast. Mrs. Hughes is the most amazing secretary and hardest worker of Southeast School. So Sue, come on up.
Thank you.
One of the, if you've never been to to the event, one of the the special things is the the students often come and read those remarks. So in this case, both of our students came and their families came to celebrate our staff that were recognized that night. So again, it's one of my my favorite events and favorite nights, favorite board meetings, just to recognize our amazing staff. Not only what the nominees do for the district and for our community, but all our staff. We have a lot of staff out there today, and I know they've all had such a huge impact on this community. So not only thank you to the nominees and the winners, but also all our staff out there for all you do.
Superdumb, it's reported. I have two items for the board to to consider tonight. The first has to do with regular meeting dates and locations. So the Board of Education annually is required to set meeting dates and and location for the coming school year. They can be changed to unexpected circumstances. The board just has to give sufficient notice, at least forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. Dates, times, and locations of special meetings are established as needed. So this is just for the regular meetings for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Back in November, the board established regular meeting dates on the fourth Tuesday of each month for the remainder of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So just using those dates. I stuck with the fourth Tuesday of every month. That is extremely helpful for the business office, just trying to clean up all the bills and things from the from the month. With three exceptions, and I noted those here, July thirtieth. I'm actually to attend a NIS ASA Board of Directors retreat. Be out of town for that, suggesting that we move that one from July twenty-third to July thirtieth. December seventeenth is the third Tuesday of the month, but the school district is close to one of the breaks, so trying to avoid one of the breaks. And then March eighteenth is also the third Tuesday of the month, trying to avoid spring break. So just working on those dates, those are the the dates I would recommend that the board consider at the at the end of the day. The board setting those meetings, those regular meeting dates for the coming school year. Any questions for me?
Those are all Tuesdays?
Those are all Tuesdays, yeah, the fourth, for the most part, the fourth Tuesdays of the month.
It's time to approve the regular meeting schedule as presented for twenty twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I just know I won't be able to attend the thirtieth, but July thirtieth, but everything else works.
Sorry about that, Christian, that's my fault.
No, don't worry, I don't take that personally.
Evans?
Here.
Freitas?
Yes.
Or yes?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Vito?
Yes.
Donda?
Yes.
Second item under my report is future-focused. So still trying to get these future-focused items worked into the agendas on a regular basis. We've already talked about artificial intelligence, but this is a pretty hot topic, so I wanted to come back and revisit some of this. Kind of give the board an update as to where we're at. In the fall, I made a presentation on artificial intelligence. We had a lot of discussion about software like ChatGPT. If you kept up to date with artificial intelligence AI software, it's absolutely exploded. It's hard to really fathom not just AI-specific programs, but programs that use artificial intelligence as part of their their coding of their their software. So there was a there was a great conversation. Sometimes I bring these ideas up, and it's kind of a brief five to ten minute. This is a this is a really robust one because the topic, I think, is so important. Maybe continuing to be a future-focused item because this is just going to expand and continue. Currently, we make AI software available to staff. Still might completely wide open, but we make it available to staff so that they can use that in the classrooms, use that in their planning, kind of see how it works. We envision a time where AI software is going to be available available for students, but there still are some hurdles that we need to clear. One of the things I talked about in the fall, I'll revisit, is SOFA. Want to make sure I get this right, Student Online Personal Protection Act. That's something that the school district is required to be in compliance with. Came into being a couple of years ago, Roxanne Horton was our tech director at the time, and she oversaw the beginning of that. That's something that Dr. Valentine continues to oversee. We have all software that we use that makes student personal information available has to be compliant with SOFA. A lot of the programs are, but not necessarily all of them. I had a conversation with Mr. Rice and Dr. Valentine before the presentation, so some of the information, the updates I got from them. In the loop on those things, not in as much detail as they are. But for the most part, AI has to do with teaching and learning and what we do in the classrooms and what we do in our schools. There are some programs that are that are going to benefit, probably from a transportation perspective, facility perspective. But both of my conversations so far has been with Mr. Rice and Dr. Valentine in teaching and learning instructional technology. After the meeting in the fall, talked about issuing some sort of guidance for our staff, and they were the ones that that actually took care of that. So they drafted some guidance, put that out to staff, and really will take the lead on how AI is used in terms of teaching and learning in the district. We see it as a means to be more efficient and productive, not only for staff, but for students as well. But we will have to continue to monitor AI. It's, I remember when cell phones became available. And while there was a great opportunity for students and for staff, there were also some dangers that we have to keep in mind and we still deal with today. That part of what we do is is going to be ongoing, I think, for the foreseeable future. We need to watch for things like AI-specific software being used to produce academic work. There are ways to tell what's written with AI and what's not, but that line gets more and more blurred, I think, every day. Being used to provide student feedback, so there are some programs, I think we can talk about one, where previously where software can generate feedback for students, can give students grades based on rubric that a teacher or instructor provides with the software. One of the things that Mr. Rice and Dr. Valentine and I talked, Dr. Valentine and I talked about was there is a part of student feedback that AI software can be really valuable for. But one thing that we want to make sure that we don't miss is is teachers being able to see student work and really keep a pulse on how individual students are progressing in their class. Just running assignments through software might create a situation where we miss that. So one of the things we want to keep in mind is just make sure that the teachers still have a pulse on how individual students are progressing. But certainly there, as we progress, there's got to be a way for software to to make teachers' jobs a little bit easier, to free up some of their time without having to sacrifice really seeing how students are performing in class. Issues regarding internet filtering. Some AI-specific software gets caught in our internet filter and some of it doesn't. So we want to make sure that we're continuing to protect our our students and staff, that it's compliant with their filters. And misconceptions, these are all things we need to keep an eye on. As it evolves, there will be misconceptions about what it is, how it works, how it can be used, what it's good for, what it's not. Just making sure that we're that we're on top of that. We're continuing to provide guidance for the staff. We'll provide and encourage professional development for AI-specific software. There are both challenges and opportunities, but it's something that's not going away. So I feel like we've got a responsibility to find ways to support its use in schools, both for students and for staff, and implement it successfully in the future. So this agenda item was on the on the board agenda that went on the staff. And just this afternoon, I got an update from Ms. Keka about how some of the software is being used at high school and middle school. First bullet point, our high school is an award-winning school when it comes to AI. Students can, some of our high school students competed at the NAU's College of Business, and they took first place. This is an area where our students are already becoming knowledgeable and excelling at the same time. I love the other, I love the way that that phrase that's, "They dominated" in four categories. Using AI to answer prompts about NAU, guessing which image was created with AI and which wasn't, Pictionary and AI Award Association. In our AP Computer Science prep class, our high school students use AI to prepare students for the AP Computer Science test, ensuring readiness and success. But we also use it at the middle school level. So using it in Canva, using with Canva, Magic AI, students creating dynamic backgrounds, images and characters for their mobile apps. With the focus on customization. I love using apps on my phone. I have no idea how to create them, how to design them. I just know that they work and they don't, or students have opportunities to get involved with writing and creating apps. Money management, our students use AI to teach financial literacy and small business principles. And then informed decision-making, using AI for strategic decision-making in various classroom activities. Middle school students use this one making apps that create random outcomes, like the Magic 8-Ball. Anybody remember the Magic 8-Ball?
Oh, yes.
I'm going to pause there. Are there any questions for me or any discussion?
Probably a question that you might not be able to answer, but how how would we monitor it? Like what would we use to monitor it to keep it from getting out of control a little too quickly? Because I've heard about it, it can just, it's so intelligent that it can kind of manifest for it on its own. I I mean, I can't really wrap my head around that, but I guess that's my question.
I think it's going to come in a couple of different ways, whether there are software programs that we can use, like internet filtering. But also, I think, just in not only in classrooms, but in our administration offices and and classrooms where teachers are using AI-specific software or software that has AI embedded in it. Continuing to roll out access gradually, getting that feedback from both both students, but really the staff members are going to be using that for the most part in the classrooms. So making sure that we're getting that feedback. This is the sort of thing where I think we'll also get feedback from parents, maybe through surveys, but maybe just through informal channels as well. I think this is the sort of initiative or the sort of change in education that we're going to have to monitor from several different angles to make sure that we're using it effectively, looking for creative ways to use it, but then also making sure that it's available in a way that's that's set first to use.
What kind of feedback do we get? Is it about a multi-level kind of feedback where you get grammar, you get content, you get? You know, I don't know what else, but you know.
I think the general answer is yes. You can get all that.
Whatever you want.
Whatever you want, it's. You know, back in the fall, when we talked about using ChatGPT, I talked to some some colleagues who had used AI to help write their graduation speeches. So back in the fall, when ChatGPT really kind of was exploding so to speak. One of the more more common uses was having AI generate, ChatGPT generate a speech or a paper or some sort of document. And now I think it goes far beyond that. You know, from giving it, you know, software program or rubric to use, I think actually Mike talked about maybe using it in fostered personalism AI component. Giving it rubrics, it will look for specific words, it will look for content. It's amazing. I never thought we'd get to a point where AI can do anything or software can do anything but identify maybe specific words. It will read large excerpts of text to 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 look for. So I I truly think the answer to your question is yes, it will look for just about anything currently, and that will only continue to expand as we as we move down. So from a monitoring standpoint that Doug brought up, I think that's going to be a challenge. There are some programs that use AI that exist that we probably don't even think about. It's really going to cause us to to become as knowledgeable as we can to rely on and staff and probably the students do, who are just savvy, who use it and can pick up on it. So you know how it can be used, how it is being used, and then how to use it most effectively in our in our classrooms.
I noticed different models, different types of things that AI can be used, and each one is, each product is like geared towards that specifically. Like there's one for image creation, there's one for mathematic equations, there's one for conversations and essays. Do you know what kind that we're using within our classrooms?
I don't know all of the the program names off the top of my list, but I can certainly start to generate a list behind me, because this is Dr. Valentine, who started to build this. And Alex emailed me the other day about a program that he or about, just wanted to make sure that it was on our radar, forwarded that to to Dr. Valentine. And I think she mentioned that we just added, we just cleared another app that was a program similar to that, I've drawn a blank on the name. But I would expect that list to be pretty fluid and and to evolve. I don't know how rapidly that will happen, but I would say on a regular basis that that list is going to expand. But I can certainly reach out to Dr. Valentine, ask her if it was ahead of the board.
It's just my opinion that we we discussed at our last board reading heavily our mission statement. And this is probably one of the biggest things that's going to separate current graduates and students here from previous graduates graduates is AI. So I I just, in my opinion, this is an area where we should really consider making an investment upfront because this is definitely going to be a part of their world, and it is currently. So. So if there's any funding we need, I I'd very much like to see what that would be and what we could purchase for the students to take full advantage of this. I know the the thing I sent you is free, but there's certain packages you can purchase. To me, it's just really important to teach students how to use this responsibly and teach them how to use it in general because a lot of their careers are going to involve artificial intelligence, specifically generative AI in one way or another, so.
I I remember quite good, one of the the comments you made either at that that special meeting or the previous meeting was that jobs that our students have, some of the jobs that our students will have when they graduate don't even exist yet. And I think that's a really good point to come back to. I think that's part of the the importance of technology in general, but certainly with AI software. There will be times where we're moving quickly, and there will be times that we're not moving as quickly. So I think one of the things that's important to be is patient. But I I also agree with with what you said, Alex. That reminds me of the earlier's with with the expansion of computers in the classrooms. And and again, phones and, you know, some excitement about that and some fear about that. But at the end of the day, if we don't accept the responsibility to expose our students to that, to make sure that they have the opportunity to interact with that software, I think we're doing them a disservice. Do you think it's important to roll out safely so that we do this in a way that we can, not necessarily control, but just we have a sense of confidence that we're doing it safely for students and staff? But we also just can't sit back and just expect it all all happen on its own. Because if we're not moving with it, it's going to involve, it will get way out ahead of us, we're totally nowhere.
Right, very quickly.
So there's going to have to be this balance.
Was that a program that Dr. Valentine approved for student use?
I don't know, I would want to double check that before I give any answers, but I can do that. I I'll make sure that that program is good, unless I get.
All right, my apologies.
Oh, no, that's okay. It's just that Red Free made your comment. I was thinking it might be good if we had in in the high school a class where students learned about these kind of things. You know, it might require an additional an additional class where they would be learning that before they graduate, if that's the direction they wanted to go. Because I agree with Alex. You know, we're not going to be able to stop the progress of this. It's already progressing much faster than even those that create it think it will. It's already going that fast, so yeah, that's something we definitely need to consider.
They do it to an extent in the coding class, I talked about this in the fall, but at the time, out of precaution, the district is blocking all the generative AI programs. And it sounds like we're And it sounds like we're starting to make progress towards unblocking some of them for students to use. Cause that's a good, that coding class is a great place for them to use it because it's applicable to the materials in the syllabus.
Okay.
I think my, my two biggest concerns are equitability, making sure, or accessibility, making sure that everybody in the district, students, teachers alike, have the same access to the same types of things. And if it's, you know, my, my fear is that if some of this technology gets baked into the physical hardware, you may have some students who have nice powerful machines with built-in, you know, A I processing capabilities at home to do all this stuff. And others are, are using district issued Chromebooks that don't have that same innate ability. So whatever it is that we're supporting, that everybody has the same level of access to it. The second would be to make sure, and I'm sure that Phoebe is on this, but that we have the proper supports in place to provide teachers the opportunity to further themselves on that, to learn how to use that technology and implement it into their curriculum. If that's the direction we're gonna support.
Yes.
I'm not sure how smart A I is yet. Word's been telling me for thirty years I use too many commas, so I don't know if it's evolved beyond that yet, but we'll see.
It writes letters now. It tells you what letter written about. It'll write you a whole letter with one sentence.
I would, I would echo Eric's, and I think the biggest issue that we're gonna face is equitable access in that district. And I don't like the, and I don't know how you, how you solve that, but I know that we should be really prioritizing making sure that, and like you said, like with students, absolutely, with teachers even, I think there are, there are somewhat, with there being so many different subjects, with there being so many different curriculum, curricula. It's, I almost, I, I, again, I don't know how you would, but I, I hope that there's some thought or promotion or, or at least some great emphasis in making sure that every department at every subject level has some evenly distributed access to this. And we're not just having some disproportionate subset that, that basically can leverage this technology and others can't. So. Cause I think that'll, that'll cause some really odd, I think, trends. And if anything, it could really be hard to correct that.
I think there's, over my years, there are certain listen topics that I think merit kind of a blanket. Everybody gets this, this professional development, this training, because it's that important. And, you know, in some cases, this is something that's really valuable, but might be more valuable or, or, or appreciated more by investment departments or, or grade levels, for, for example. So in my conversations with, with Mike and Phoebe, I think they've got a pretty good pulse on that. I think they recognize the, the need to provide professional development across the board. But this is probably one thing where one training for everybody is gonna be difficult. Because how an art teacher uses it versus a science teacher or a math teacher, elementary versus a high school, it's a little different. But one of the things that we do, I think we've done a really good job, like at Sparticon, is provide a variety of professional development opportunities with sometimes different things. So they may not all get the exact same thing, but I think training and P D that's offered that kind of relates to their area of study, of their area of expertise are things that we can do on a pretty manageable basis.
Do department heads and like team leaders have access to put in requests for subject-specific software? Like if you had a, like in, the English team, or if you are, if you had like the, I don't know, let's say the third grade team say, hey, we wanna be a leads, you know, with an otter A I as a, as a means, and that would probably would be the third grade level. But maybe it's your, your English team or department more or less today. Is there a request process that they can put in? So that way they can kind of decide what they need and then ultimately, does that go through a channel to Phoebe, I assume? And then does Phoebe have some protocol that allows her to evenly dole out access to these programs or is that infrastructure still so?
So I know that there are mechanisms in place for, for teachers, departments, grade levels to make this request. I think that's somehow, that's how she's made some of the decisions to, to open up certain software or with the process, making sure it's fully compliant. You know, those mechanisms probably look a little bit different depending on what career level department, those sorts of things. I would say we've invested in instructional technology, so Phoebe has, I would say a significant budget to work with. So I think, I don't wanna speak to her, but I think her approach is, is trying to, to stretch her dollars, her resources as far as she can. So there, there may be situations where not everybody gets the same dollar amount. But I know that one of her priorities in, in this, her priorities is making sure that we're covering as many bases as we possibly can. And, and certainly some grade levels and departments are, are maybe a little more interested in it than others. We wanna support that. But we also wanna make sure that even the individuals, individual teachers that may be a little bit more reluctant, we're still offering opportunities for them to. It's, it's a large job for, for both Phoebe and Mike, but I think they, again, I think they recognize the importance of doing that through chat.
Well, Phoebe, is Phoebe gonna give a presentation at some point in future about kind of some of the updates in her, in the tech realm?
So after one of our recent meetings, I did kind of jot it down, and whether it's specific software programs, whether it's A I, maybe network infrastructure a little bit, made a note to bring Phoebe in at some point. I don't know if that'll happen for the end of the school year, so it may not happen until the fall. I don't know that summer is the best time to do that either. But I, I have, we did have a conversation about making sure that she's on a future agenda. We talked about those things.
Are staff encouraged to experiment with this? So if they want to use A I in their classroom, could they? On both, with their students? For example, if I was a history teacher and I wanted to use the program that I sent you, how would I go about doing that? Is there a process in place for that?
Yes, but I also wanna stress that it's not wide open for everybody yet. There are still some limits in place. We gotta make sure that the software is compliant or a filter, you know, catches it, things like that. So staff can't just download any program that they want and, and use it. There's a, we would ask that they, they clear that up at the department chair, the administration, that gets to, to Phoebe to, to look at. But in terms of encouraging experimentation, yeah. You know, we don't set up regular messages, hey, you know, make sure that you're experimenting with, with A I and software. But where there is interest and we hear about that, we wanna support that. So we, when we hear about that, when we're aware of that, either directly from the teacher, the grade level or department, or from the administration, I think we wanna react to that. So if we know that there are people, my experience is that how, is that how, that's how things evolve in, in K word education is when you know you have interest, you wanna support that. So yeah, we do do that.
And Steve, I'll just say at Pumpkin Fest and Sparticon, we had multiple offerings on A I presented by our teachers that were already using it in the classroom in different ways. So they presented it to all staff. It was open to anyone, not just in the content area. Here's some ideas, here's how I'm using it. And they did some intro beginner level, and then made some more advanced to. And interest that it grew. I mean, at, at Sparticon, they were full sessions. So we have, I, I think staff just wondering, what's this look like in science? What's this look like in my content area? So, you know, I, I do think that's the hard part about something like this is our teachers are learning at the same time our students are. So just making sure we're equipping our, our teachers the best we can and exposing them. But outside of just what they can do with students, and I don't know if any of you specialized people have used it this way, but just talking to some colleagues, I mean, it can be used just, you know, I have students with these present levels. I'm trying to come up with a goal. I just can't figure out what that is. So they can enter in some of that general language and then maybe it shoots you an idea for a goal. At least a starting point, because you just couldn't figure out the wording. So there's other ways just to make your job more efficient or if you just get stuck, they can use it. And I think some of our staff is used it that way.
I think my final question is, does our network filtering software allow the district to block and unblock specific web addresses? So let's say we wanna approve school A I, which is the one that I sent to Soper compliant, but we don't wanna unblock Chat G P T. Is there a way to do that and not block everything or?
I think if Ed Hawn noted over here, he would say yes and no. Is there a way to do that? Yeah, we do have the capability to identify a specific URL or IP address and, and block that. We have the ability to block specific software. I think one of the constant challenges in, in internet filtering has been this way since I, you know, beginning years as a teacher or administrator. It seems to be an issue now, although it's, I think we've gotten better at it. There's, there are always really knowledgeable individuals who, students who, you know, try to find ways around the filter to use A I programs. So, or, or any kind of program. So I think that's a constant battle. How can you set up a safe environment and put safeguards in place? While at the same time you know that talented tech users are constantly trying to work around that. So we do have the capability to do that. But I know that one of the challenges that, that we face is that sometimes students find ways around that. And when that happens, you've got to backtrack and figure out how they got in, how that happened, and then, and then turn one off, but making sure we don't turn others off at the same time.
Okay, that's what, so you can sort of select in a way.
Every, every once in a while, because a threat is so significant, we've gotta do more of a blanket. We, we just need to put everything on hold for a minute until we kind of get a handle on this. That doesn't happen very often. Happen a couple of times in my, in my literature, but, you know, our response is always directly proportional to the, the risk. So if we can just make a, a small tweak, it, it can save, we're gonna do that. Every once in a while we have to be a little more expansive, but that's only because, you know, the risk that we know is. Any other questions for me?
Would we have to change, make any changes to student performance evaluations? I mean, there might be students who are really good at using A I, but they don't know the content of what they're
Most, most software providers have safeguards in place to protect data. One of my favorite examples, I think of what you're, you're kind of touching on is, I'm a big fan of Ferris Bueller's Day Off, Indecent First Bueller's Day Off. Do it. And at one point, vice principal is, is looking at his screen, is looking at his grades, and as he's looking at the screen, Ferris is at home changing the grade. Right? I think there are, are safeguards in place to avoid things like that happening. But those are things that we have to be aware of, but also software companies have to be aware as well that their, their software is locked down, so nobody can hack into it. Whether those are hackers, students, other software companies trying to steal information. That's a network security, is it an ever-expanding field right now?
I, I'm not talking so much about security as I am about individual student progress to make sure that they're advancing in their knowledge as opposed to just, you know, pulling up A I and I'm good at, you know, throwing it down because I, I'm good at A I.
Yeah, so making sure that students, you know, monitoring individual students' progress, making sure that it's accurate, and that we're getting accurate future students' progress.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that we're always gonna have to, to worry about that for some programs that are, are pretty good at that already. But, you know, as time marches on, there will be other programs that come on the market that are in deep or flipping act. So I think that's one of the things that not only are we gonna have to look at the software offers, but part of our conversation now, I think, it's gonna have to be, okay, how secure is, is your software? How, how, how secure is, is the data? And how accurate is the reporting? So that we know that our students' score is based on feedback.
Yeah, I think what he's touching on is just more the assessment side of it. And if you've got stu-, students well-versed in, in doing their work at home with the assistance of A I, maybe we're getting, you know, maybe on the assessment side, you're not getting the true picture of what their, their actual mastery is in that content. But I would think that would be somewhat negated by the in-class assessments, map testing, all that stuff that they're have, they would have to do throughout the year.
Well, yeah, we did, I mean, we'd have map for the lower grades, but high school.
So it's. There are, there are already sites and software that you, that the teachers can use, copy and paste content in. Where'd this come from? Is this a pure B I generated or just a pure B I thing? So there are tools being used like that right now. Some of them are better than others. But I think that's one of the things we're gonna need to be asking about when we use software programs is if A I is gonna be used to, student assessment, is it, what's its capability in terms of, you know, figuring out what's authentic and what may not be. It's. We're gonna have to monitor on, on our end, but software companies are gonna have to monitor on their end as well. So that's gonna be part of their program.
Well, it's, it's just that I see now that a lot of these schools that had waived, you know, the S A T or, you know, tests to, test scores to evaluate whether a student gets in or not. Now are, are rethinking that and going back and requiring that you have those scores. And I'm just wondering how we make sure that if we have students who are using A I, that they're actually internalizing the concepts so that they can, you know, demonstrate that when it comes time for the S A Ts or A C Ts. So, I mean, it's almost like we're creating a whole new subcategory of evaluation.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's funny though. I, I was always reminded when I took, I won't say whose class, but I couldn't use a graphing calculator for certain things, or I couldn't use a T I eighty-four for certain things. Now at work, I pull out my T I eighty-four and I can use it whenever I want. Nobody's looking, so I don't know. I mean, I'm, I appreciate where you're coming from, Jim, on this. Definitely, you don't want people squeaking or slipping through the cracks because they're, they're going by at these assessments. But I think at the other side of it, like, I've seen A I-generated content from students and then everything else is just terrible. And you go, like, what doesn't belong? And you, you, it's so obvious, like, it, so on some level, I think isn't it, like, if you're moderating it, it, it isn't too difficult to spot the, what doesn't belong here, at least now. Is it an uphill battle? I mean, I imagine so, but I don't know. I think all assessments can, you, in some level, you could, you know, kind of thwart if you really wanted to, just.
I think our greatest task is that there are teachers and there are, there are boots on the ground and they're gonna help. When they meet with their peers and their, you know, their teams, they're, they're gonna bring up these challenges and we just, as a district, have to support. And have, and have a mechanism for them to report what they need. Whether that's, you know, a program, a tool, a policy, whatever we have to do to support them. I think we just need to have that mechanism where they can report that to us, which we have in place now.
I just think education's gonna shift more from a retention of knowledge focus that we had in the past to the ability to retrieve knowledge because now it's just so accessible. There's gonna be a bigger breadth of knowledge, but it might not be as focused on retention just because it's so easy to find the answer to anything. I guess that's a broader philosophical discussion for another time. That's just my two cents on it.
You just have to identify what's the right, what's the right answer.
Sure. Like a genie in a bottle, right? What do you add?
Yeah, it's a brave new world. Anything else? Okay, next then would be open discussion, future agenda items. We identified a few future agenda items. Be nice to hear from, from Phoebe.
Yes. There's specific questions for, for more technical.
And in the meantime, if there are questions like that from a Phoebe or Mark in facilities or, or Mike on teaching and learning, I just wanna reiterate, if you have specific questions to me, and I'll, I'll make sure that you answer them.
Is there, um, is there a way we can make this a future agenda item, like a, a re-review of standing committees? More or less like where we could have more or fewer, sort of a dual-pronged approach to like this, the mission, the, the mission reshaping of our strategic goals? Kind of just coming out of our, our evaluations. Kind of just coming out of our our um, evaluations.
Right.
Yeah, right.
You guys have a little bring it in there?
Sounds like we do enjoy this.
Uh, but uh, in terms of future agenda items, uh, we had talked about the construction list.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll get that.
Another one, because we're in sort of election season, is um, I was talking with the elections office recently and they said, it just came, it kinda came up, you have a call with the elections office. They're they're a lively bunch over there. It's the best way to put it, like, always a fun conversation. But uh, one of the people there, I don't wanna get her name wrong, but she said Sycamore School District is the only district in the county who does at-large, or doesn't do at-large elections. We do this three people from all these county things or something like that. And so she said that we could, as a board, put to referendum, uh, removing that requirement and making it more accessible to the community at large, basically an at-large election process. Uh, which I actually thought was like a really interesting thought, because, you know, it kinda makes you wonder why we're the only district who's in DeKalb County doing this. And I think it's one of those things that just, there probably was a really good reason. And now I'm just drawing attention to, is that still a really good reason? So.
You know, in the time that I've been on the board, we've we've tried two referendums and both went down in threes. Um, I think it's because we serve so many outward communities that are a part of Sycamore per se.
And they, in in the referendum voted against, like, it didn't pass.
Yeah, they didn't wanna be, um, they didn't wanna be overshadowed by just Sycamore. They wanted to have representatives that come from the outside communities as well, so.
That's interesting.
But we gave them the opportunity, I mean, we could do it again, too.
Well, I just, I'm, I think, my only, I guess, cause for like looking at it is the past several elections. And we've gotten really, really good people from it, but we've had to appoint people, which like, from a democracy standpoint, like, is not the way it's supposed to work. They're supposed to elect people, but instead we're appointing people. So it'd be, to me, it would just, I would think that the call would be, hey, if we make this at least more accessible, more people might take an interest, we might get more engagement from the community, you know? I don't know. But obviously, in the past, there have been people who have risen up against it and want their officials appointed. Uh, like, I was a write-in. I mean, I just wrote my name down.
Yeah.
So like, and it makes.
Which wouldn't have changed things, I mean, after you had an open election or not?
Well, and like this, and just to clarify, this wouldn't affect the upcoming election? It would be.
Oh, no, it had to be, it had to be.
It'd be way out in, so, so this isn't like a, oh, like, you know, this is like future people.
Yeah.
Well, not everyone probably wants to walk the district and ask people to sign their petition to get them on the ballot either. And that's probably why you don't get more people.
Oh, I mean, you can, now we can write.
You have to put, uh, forthwork to do that. And even with the write-in, don't you have to get ten people to write you in? Yeah, you have to get ten people at least that are willing to write you in.
You have to file, you have to file.
You'll only need one vote.
Yeah.
I don't have ten friends, but I'll talk.
But I I would support that, Mike. I know we've lost some some good board members, just in my term, but because they moved and that took them in an area where then they became the fourth member of a, you know, a township. So I'm I'm certainly open to letting the voters decide if they're ready to.
Yeah.
Increase participation on the board by removing some of those um, guidelines.
Yeah.
Most of the growth in the community's been in Sycamore, Cortlandt Townships. I mean, a little bit, I guess, like, a little tiny subdivision off Motel is the only growth that's occurred in any township besides Sycamore, Cortlandt, I'm aware of, in the last twenty, fifteen, twenty years, so. Demographics are, might have shifted a little.
Would you like, you know, reach out to the county parks office just to give details about causes to do that?
Yeah, you probably have the wording for the for the referendum, I mean, it's, it was the same all times.
I'd like to know more about it. I didn't know that you could just get, I thought you had to get at least ten people to also write you in if you're, if you filed as a write-in. That's what I thought, I mean, obviously, I was wrong on my, what I thought.
But if you were a write-in and you weren't from the right city area, then.
Yeah, you'd have to be within this, within the district.
Then you'd have to write, you'd have to get enough to, right, to be, put that as, that, those.
The only other thing I have, and this is hopefully pretty straightforward, is after the meeting where we set the goals, or you got, or you and the, what is it, the the district cabinet, I believe, and Mr. Roosevelt? Sure, Gary, me, um, and would it be possible to get those out to the public to take a look at before the board approves them? So if there's any glaring oversight that we forgot, someone can come forward and say, oh, I'd really like to see this, and we can consider it. I think we did a pretty nice job, but just to, I, one of the main goals that seemed to be was community um, perception and communication. So in the spirit of that, we're, you know, the the goals of the, all that work that's been done so far has really been based on the community survey feedback. Um, my, one of my thoughts was that when after the, the, you know, we worked with Gary on on developing some, defining goals to then developing ac- action steps, to make a presentation for where you guys have a chance to see those. Uh, and what we could do is, this is part of why we do second readings on some things, is to make the presentation, let it sit for uh, a month with the board, consider that, but the community also has had a chance at that point to see it. And um, you know, I can work with with Lauren in Communications to um, to create a mechanism for people to give us feedback so that when we come back to the board, maybe on a second reading, uh, or a second time for approval, that we can also present, okay, we got this feedback on this specific role or this specific action step. I think there's a couple of ways we could, we could do that. I can work with, I can work with Lauren on that. Sure, I'm not sure if we could get feedback, but I think it's worth a shot.
Yeah, I'd be curious how much time it's gonna take for a little.
Yeah, we should give the opportunity for that to be.
I think just just putting out the survey gives people the opportunity, um, even to be, uh, pretty simple.
So what was that, Eric? I'm a sidebar over here.
I I was concerned about how much time it might take to put together a survey like that.
Oh, I didn't mean a survey, I just meant, here's the presentation, what do you guys think? I mean, even if we.
What do you guys think is a survey?
Well, wouldn't they just, wouldn't, not in, I mean, just like they'd email Lauren or something and say, here's what I think. We don't have to get a ton of people, but.
I I don't think. They suggested a survey while you guys were kind of saying, that's why I'm saying, look.
Even if it's just an email asking for like general feedback, maybe just a question or two. I guess they'll see that as it as a survey, but just a, just a way, I mean, for community to give us feedback. I think that's pretty easy to do.
Other future agenda items?
Um, just a question about the committees. So are we on the same committees, or we all get put on different committees next year? Well, because mine ended as of the last meeting we had, was the last one we had for the school year, so.
I'll keep the CAC going, actually, so long as you're appointed that committee. Like, next year, I anticipated making sure that you provided and all the meeting dates and stuff.
Typically, they don't change till there's a, an election and the board reconvenes.
Oh, okay.
Other future agenda items? All right, then I um, need a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to evidence or testimony presented to a school board regarding denial of admission to school events or property pursuant to section twenty-four dash twenty-four of the school code, provided that the school board prepares and makes available for public inspection a written decision setting forth its determinative reasoning pursuant to five ILCS one-twenty slash two C four point five.
So moving.
Second.
We'll call.
Greatos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Apple?
Yes.
Vito?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Jonda? Second. Moving seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we stand adjourned, thank you very much.